Well, good morning, everybody. Everybody looks so bright and cheery this morning. The lighting looks better in here, doesn't it? Maybe it's just the glow from all of you board members. I'd like to call the meeting of September 28, 2021, the DuPage County Board to order. May I ask, please, would Jim Zay, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then, everyone, please remain standing for our invocation.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Our invoker this morning is Pastor Dan Wegerson. Pastor Wegerson is from the St. John's Lutheran Church in Lombard. Pastor?
We pray. Dear Lord Jesus, in the Scriptures you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, we pray for our leaders today, for the various levels of county officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. We ask that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in their lives and joy in their work. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved county. It is in your most blessed name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Here. Sorry. DeSart. Duceyani. Echoff. Garcia. Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Schorzy. Salmon. Tornatori.
Here.
Zay.
We have a quorum. Thank you very much, and welcome to our new deputy clerk for the day. Good morning, everybody. On the order of chairman's report, it's my privilege and honor to present to you the fiscal year 2022 budget proposal. And I come before you to present this budget proposal for your consideration. Together, we continue to face a foe that impacts every facet of our lives, our finances, our operations, and our local economy. We all know what that is: COVID-19. That's why I'm standing here in front of you with a mask on. That's why all of you have masks on. While we have made remarkable progress in the battle against this deadly virus, the Delta variant provides a dangerous reminder that we're not quite out of this yet. So as county leaders, we have shepherded our residents, our employees, and our businesses through this perhaps the most challenging time in our generation. I always believed that the ship of government turned slowly until the coronavirus showed us exactly how nimble, creative, adaptable, and flexible we could all be. Our county government changed our practices almost overnight. We never shut down, and we continuously provided outstanding levels of service to the public. And it's a good thing, because people needed us. We all saw firsthand the importance of local government. Whether our public works and transportation crews were delivering hand sanitizer and PPE to polling places, or helping to get meals to residents in need, or whether we joined our regional partners in cleaning up tornado damage, DuPage County delivered, pulling together, pitching in whenever and wherever needed. A year ago, I told you we would always put public health and public safety first. And you know what? We have. Think about it. Less than two years ago, we didn't social distance. We'd never heard of, nor could we conceive of, Zooming for a meeting. And we didn't have to worry about relearning algebra to teach our kids who are home from school, or learning from home. Together, we have all adapted. And while we acknowledge we are not out of the COVID threat yet, we must also note how far we have come. For example, a year ago, a vaccine against COVID was not within our reach. We had not yet hit the deadliest months we faced with COVID, November and December of 2020. We saw our loved ones mostly through screens or outside from a distance. We are each playing an active role in what I believe will be a strong recovery. And so my priorities for 2022 will continue to be public health, public safety, and strategic investments in infrastructure that will pay off for years to come. I know you will join me in saluting the excellent work of our DuPage County Health Department, which led the way during our response to this pandemic. As you know, we all worked well with them, and they led the way for us. I joined them in aggressively advocating for our fair share of vaccine to be distributed to the county. And when it arrived here, our residents rolled up their sleeves and made DuPage the county with the highest vaccination rate in the state and one of the top 10% in the nation. Our Health Department has done a marvelous job, and our vaccination rates are enviable. Almost 100% of seniors in DuPage have had at least one shot. 88%, 88% of all eligible DuPage County residents have received at least one COVID-19 vaccine dose, and 71% are fully vaccinated, based on the data from the CDC. We must simply keep up the fight and know that together we will return to a state of good health, both physically for people and fiscally for our businesses and economy, so hard-hit by the pandemic. A year ago, we were very uncertain about how COVID would impact our county's economic state. Following our history of careful fiscal management, we hope for the best and plan for the worst. Due to several factors, including the distribution of Federal CARES Act funds, better-than-expected sales tax revenues, and the impact of the soaring suburban housing market, I can report to you today that the state of our county's finances is indeed healthy, sound, and perhaps stronger than we could have predicted. Let's begin by reviewing our revenue picture. Due to the prudent management of resources, we are projected to end fiscal year 2021 on a positive note. This progress was made due to better-than-expected revenues from sales and income tax, as well as from income the county receives from transfer stamps and recording fees, which are collected during real estate transactions. As you may remember, we reduced the amount we budgeted for projected sales tax revenue for FY '21 by 10%, fearing a devastating impact from COVID. However, DuPage County's sales tax revenue is projected to finish the year about 20% over budget. We will be able to use the resulting funds to position ourselves for the future, making targeted and strategic investments to secure our infrastructure and improve the county's efficient and effective delivery of services. While we are determined to continue to be responsible stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, we will accelerate crucial projects in this fiscal year, freeing up FY 2022 dollars for critical projects budgeted for next year. I know this board will continue to deliberate and will work with the county clerk on the purchase of new election equipment to conduct the 2022 elections. When the new system is selected, we plan to pay for that purchase out of 2021 funds. We will also pay out $4 million this year to complete the Tyler Property Tax System implementation. This project, as you recall, allows us to modernize our annual property tax collection process, impacting the work of our treasurer and supervisor of assessments. This is indeed a critical function and one of the primary duties of our county. As we look at our vehicle replacement practices impacting our general fund in 2021, we will set aside $3 million to establish a vehicle replacement fund, which will allow the county to replace those vehicles assessed as reaching the end of their useful life on a rolling basis. This year, we also intend to set aside $2.5 million for improving county infrastructure. We will invest in critical projects, such as restoring the nearly 50-year-old roof on the 421 Administration Building, which is original to the building's construction, which was completed in 1972. We'll improve safety and accessibility by upgrading and rehabbing elevators on campus, and we will invest in more efficient lighting systems in several campus buildings, allowing us to save on our utility bills moving forward. Additionally, this county is responding to evolving labor market conditions as department heads and elected officials report challenges hiring and retaining essential staff. Our county is certainly not alone in this struggle. Senior staff and human resources are currently collaborating on a market analysis to determine where adjustments are needed to bring salaries in line with newer market rates. These actions will allow us to maintain and hire valuable staff, providing the outstanding level of county service our residents have come to expect. As we look ahead to our 2022 budget, we receive department requests for $212.8 million and anticipated revenues of $202.4 million, leaving a gap of around $10.4 million. We worked closely with elected officials and department heads to identify priorities and potential areas of savings to close this gap. We thank all for these collaborative discussions. Previously, we received presentations from the State's Attorney, Sheriff, Public Defender, and Probation Department describing how their offices will be impacted by two important factors: rising crime rates and the mandates presented by the new SAFE-T Act, passed by the Illinois General Assembly and signed into law earlier this year. During State's Attorney Bob Berlin's budget presentation, he reported a 17% increase in felony caseloads compared to 2019. For example, he noted that burglaries were up 95% from 2016 to 2019. In 2020, there were 16 carjackings charged in DuPage County, up from just four in 2018. We must, and we will, maintain our commitment to public safety in DuPage County. We know our ability to maintain safe streets and communities is one of the top reasons people choose to live here. As a result, my budget proposal provides support to the programs the sheriff and the state's attorney need to continue to aggressively fight crime and prosecute those charged. It also provides the dollars needed to staff specialty court programs and diversion programs, such as the Focus Court, which allows first-time drug offenders to receive treatment and frequently check in with court staff to maintain a program of sobriety and recovery. Participation in these programs has increased dramatically, thanks to the good work of prosecutors, public defenders, probation, our judiciary, and court staff. We are using every tool we have to reduce crime, cut recidivism, and make our communities as safe as possible while providing those eligible a path to a productive, positive life. But these types of positive results require investment. This year, I propose to double the annual funding for our Heroin-Opioid Prevention Education, or HOPE, task force. We know an increasing number of our residents are impacted by opioids, including pills, heroin, and fentanyl. Moving our line item from 100,000 to 200,000 this year allows the task force to fund more grassroots community programs that will make a difference. Our communities need this investment, and our residents deserve nothing less. Diversion programs, prevention, and education will keep people out of the criminal justice system, and my budget proposal provides the necessary funding to keep these high-quality programs running successfully. Our public safety professionals will also be impacted by the SAFE-T Act. We heard from State's Attorney Bob Berlin and Public Defender Jeff York that they must increase staffing as they comply with this new law. My budget proposal before you today includes the necessary funding for the positions needed to fulfill these responsibilities by both offices, the prosecutor and the defender. In FY '22, we will also continue to support the sheriff's request for body cams and tasers to comply with SAFE-T Act requirements. Our budget plan also supports the equipment the sheriff needs and the practices he employs to keep jail inmates safe from the spread of COVID. His experience and proactive health practices have made DuPage Jail a model for infection control. As I said earlier, DuPage County responded quickly to the COVID crisis. I'm extremely proud of the way we addressed the needs of DuPage's small businesses hurt by the pandemic. I'm pleased to say that DuPage County was a leader in creating and administering the first grant relief program in our area to help those businesses hit hardest. Last year, we utilized CARES Act funds, authorizing over $20 million for reinvest DuPage Small Business Relief Grant Program. This program provided relief to more than 1,600 of our small businesses heavily impacted by the pandemic, thanks to Choose DuPage for helping to design and administer this program. And just this summer, DuPage County again authorized a new round of funding, over $1,600,000, which allowed eligible businesses to apply for grants up to $50,000. As a result, 460 local businesses, including 107 restaurants, 28 manufacturers, and 42 retail establishments, received grants. So many businesses told us these grants kept their businesses open and the lights on during this most difficult time. These are the types of strategic investments we will continue to make over the next year that will better position us for the future as we help our community emerge from the pandemic. As we plan for transportation, public works, and stormwater projects in 2022, we are focusing on areas that will significantly improve residents' quality of life. For example, before the end of 2021, our Division of Transportation will complete the first-ever truly-long-range transportation plan, defining the projects, initiatives, and programs that will take us through the next 20 years. These projects include design engineering in fiscal year 2022 for the reconstruction and widening of Fabian Parkway to enhance safety and provide much-needed capacity to accommodate the tremendous growth in the manufacturing and logistics sectors at the DuPage Business Park in West Chicago. We will also begin design work on the reconstruction of York Road in the vicinity of I-390, just on the west side of O'Hare Airport. This is a joint project with the Tollway, one of our partners, as we seek to move western access forward. I will continue to invest time and resources in realizing the economic opportunity on the west side of O'Hare Airport. We will also invest in our county infrastructure. For example, we will continue to bring Lake Michigan water to communities who seek to make this critical change. My 2022 budget proposal includes a project in unincorporated Downers Grove Township that will bring Lake Michigan water to 29 homes in the Timberlake subdivision. We collaborated with Illinois State Senator and former DuPage County Board Member John Curran, who secured $400,000 in state funding to partner with our Public Works Department, which has designed and received bid results to construct a new water main system in the area. On the north side of the county, we will substantially complete our $10-million Nordic wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. This project provides upgrades, creating a state-of-the-art wastewater treatment facility exceeding the current environmental water quality standards. And our stormwater department will protect communities plagued with frequent flooding with the installation of a second gate at our Elmhurst Quarry, leveraging federal funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. We're also making investments in our people, especially staff who provide essential services to the most vulnerable residents we serve. Utilizing federal dollars that have come to us through the American Rescue Plan Act, we're placing social work case managers in eviction courts. Our judges in the 18th Judicial Circuit are to be credited for working so closely with residents, landlords, and social service agencies, putting people first, so that the focus is on helping those in need and keeping them safely housed. In fiscal 2022, our Community Services Department will administer $6.5 million in new funding specifically for affordable housing projects. This is in addition to the $1.8 million Community Services administers in a typical year. We will stand up a new program that helps people pay their water bills, along with traditional Liheat program, which also is significantly larger this year, to help DuPage residents pay their energy bills. We will undertake all these projects and deliver outstanding service to our residents. We will work closely with the DuPage County Health Department and continue to fight COVID. We will work with our law enforcement, state's attorney, criminal justice system, ensuring the public's safety, all while delivering a balanced budget to our residents. We will make necessary investments and plan for our future while maintaining crucial balance in our cash flow, so that we can handle unexpected expenses or emergencies. Our award-winning fiscal practices and our checks and balances remain in effect as we make these strategic investments to help our people emerge from this pandemic. In summary, our 2022 general fund is balanced at $207.8 million with a total budget of $465.5 million. We will not increase homeowners' property taxes in 2022. The property tax levy will be adjusted slightly by about $500,000 to $69.5 million, enough only to capture new growth and properties added to the tax rolls. The county's portion of the average homeowner's property tax bill will remain flat or it slightly decreases in 2022. This budget plan is now yours, yours to discuss, to review, to debate. I have made a concerted effort to collaborate with all of you, with all the department heads, with all the leadership here in the county to propose spending that builds a strong foundation for the decade ahead. Our specific targeted investments are designed to create impact in areas of identified needs. We want the next generation, our children and grandchildren, to find safe streets, welcoming communities, and the opportunity to grow and thrive right here in DuPage County. Thank you. Okey-dokey. Thanks. That concludes the chairman's report. So we move on to the next order of business entitled "Public Comment." Public comment. This is where we invite members of the public to share their thoughts with us. We welcome those thoughts, but we also ask that they abide by our rules and that they limit their remarks to no more than three minutes. Three minutes. All remarks shall not exceed 30 minutes. So with that, the first citizen seeking to be recognized for public comment is Margaret Brownlee.
Thank you, and good morning to everyone. I understand there's going to be a new RFP report, making voting vendor recommendations. Now we're starting over, but the clock is ticking. For me, it begs the question, what is this really about? National Voter Registration Day is today, and yet here in DuPage County, we're not even really ready yet to prep for upcoming elections, because I'm not really sure. Is this really about the money? To quote a fellow precinct captain in quotes, "Whatever other very specific brands, equipment, or vendors, or other departments have asked for, they have gotten: body cameras, uniforms, brand-name dog food, warm milk for CARES Center, road de-icer, stoplights, and even generously deciding to spend more on meals given to the prisoners." This is all great. It goes on and on. I spoke to some people yesterday on my precinct walk, who said, in quotes, "I pay, and I'm okay with the best choice, regardless of price." So what is this really about? Voting equipment features and voter experience? The technical-savvy experts of DuPage County already clarified the pros and cons before of different machines and made a clear choice. Could this really be about something else? The mind wanders. Are we looking at ulterior motives, as in pay-for-play? Suspicion arises when I read one of a report like this, and I quote, "Pennsylvania State Auditor was concerned when ESNS offered flights to Las Vegas, tickets to wine festivals, admission to amusement parks, dinners at high-end restaurants, and open bars at conferences for public officials in 27% of the Pennsylvania counties, per the Trib Live 2/22/2019." Another published report stated, in quotes, "Pennsylvania Councilwoman Linda McCloskey House called for ESNS to be removed from consideration of a $4-million contract following a pay-for-play controversy," end of quote. This is from the Citizens Voice on 6/19/2019. Yikes. There are many more published reports like this. And when company shows you who they are, believe them. What is this really about? Back to the question. If we cannot trust the experts delegated to make this unbelievably important decision, I don't know where to go from here. Please support the outcome that the experts are going to give you. The voters are getting tired of this. Let's get this rolling, and thank you very much for your time.
Becky Simon.
Good morning. I'm Becky Simon, speaking for the League of Women Voters of Naperville. Happy National Voter Registration Day. There are not many League of Women Voters representatives here today, because most of us are out registering new voters. All across DuPage County, in high schools and libraries, we are registering voters today. That is what we do. We work for the voters of DuPage County. I encourage the DuPage County Board to work for the voters of DuPage County by approving funding for the best election equipment available, not the cheapest, and for heaven's sakes, not used equipment again. Voters of DuPage County deserve the best election equipment available. Thank you.
Mary Hobine.
I'm Mary Hobine, and I'm speaking for the League of Women Voters of Downers Grove, Woodridge, and Lyle. And Becky said a lot of what I'm going to tell you, too. We're out registering voters, not only today, but we serve so many communities that we actually started more than two weeks ago. Because in addition to Downers Grove, Woodridge, and Lyle, we serve Hinsdale, Darien, Westmont, and anybody in between that doesn't have their own named league. We serve them. And many of our members are doing this today. I was working yesterday. We've been working in libraries and in high schools. And when you think about the high schools, these are the brand-new voters. We would like their first and all of their voting experiences to be of confidence in the system that they are supporting by voting. They need confidence in the security of the voting systems, in the accuracy, and the transparency. So I would urge you not to make the county wait any longer than at all possible to get a new system in, because as had been said before, we have 3,000 election judges that need to be trained. We need the best, not the cheapest, as Becky said, and I totally agree. All of my members agree, who have spoken to me about this. We need the best system, not the cheapest. We want voter confidence in our systems. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes the public comment for in-person public comment. We do have a number of individuals who have sought to share their thoughts electronically, and some of the emails I'm advised are rather lengthy. So it seems to me that we try to, you know, include all of them, but if some of the comment that's written exceeds three minutes, it's up to the board members, but it would be my inclination to say we'll put the rest of that commentary into the minutes of the meeting. You don't want to reward people. So if you can't talk here longer than three minutes, you shouldn't be able to talk. Yes, Member Ozog.
Chairman, I'd just like to get a clarification. I believe our rules talk about, we have 30 minutes of public participation when people are here physically, and I don't believe we have a provision for what we do with people who have written in, and that was begun during our virtual meetings. So I think, first of all, we need to address if we're going to include these, but I think that it would be reasonable that these are sent to us electronically and that we are able to review all of them. Because our rules don't call for these to have to be shared. And I think we really, we need to clean that up. Since we are back in person, it would seem to me our original rules should be enforced. Thank you.
Well, okay, first of all, are you proposing that we do not read these into the record right now?
I am, because I think we're able to, we can read them into the record electronically and have them sent to every board member, and then they would become part of the minutes.
Okay. It's my understanding that there has been deliberation, there has been some discussion, there is a plan. You know, we sort of accommodated citizens during the pandemic. That's correct. We're still sort of in the pandemic. We both were wearing masks here, so folks are...
But we're not, we're present, though. We have to be here because the order allowing us to Zoom, except for...
Well, I've always tried to err on the side of allowing more people to participate in the process. So, Member Salmon.
Just an update from the Rules Committee. I'm meeting with Jason today. We're hoping to get this resumed in October now that we're a little farther in the budget process. We've had significant conversations about the public comment aspect of this, both among the committee and community members weighing in. Our plan is to have it be a 30-minute cap, in-person first, then online, and then, as we've done the last few weeks, all these comments do get in our minutes packet so we can read them. So that's sort of the compromise as of now, but there's still definitely more discussion.
So, so, so you're proposing that we, right now, you're making a motion that we refrain from reading these remarks into the record and just put them in the minutes? And don't have our deputy clerk read the comments that have been proposed? Is that what you're suggesting? Not clear.
No, that's what our current rules are, that we have 30 minutes of public participation in-person.
Okay, so, okay. Members Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I am totally opposite of that. I think we, the chairman, has set a precedent where we've had people in-person speak, and if we had time remaining in that 30 minutes, we would then let those people who sent in public comments go up until that 30-minute notice. I think that's fair. If any board member would like the public comments, I know several weeks ago I called our secretary and was sent those, so if anybody wants to review them, they're there for you to review. All you have to do is ask for them. But I would lean with going with letting the public participate up to that 30-minute period that we've been doing for several weeks and during the, you know, the beginning of the pandemic.
And I know that there's been an effort to reevaluate all this, and I really embrace that and encourage that process. And I know the vice chair and others have been engaged in an examination of it, and so I just thought that until we have formalized a new approach, we would continue to utilize the previous approach, which allotted 30 minutes to this part of our meeting. So I don't know.
And I appreciate that, and 30 minutes, please proceed. But I would think, I think that we absolutely, without requesting them, everybody should, all of the boards should receive the electronic comments.
They'd be put in the minutes, you can review the minutes. And, yeah, and so I, and there's a process underway to evaluate how we handle this, and so, yeah, so maybe some sharing your thoughts with those folks being part of that collaborative effort, that'd be a good way to...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That may be just something I would suggest. Mr. Kuduski.
Yeah, just real quick, I think with your original question, we should limit it to three minutes on the reading, just like we do for the public.
Yeah, that was my, kind of my gut feel, so...
But 30 minutes total is what we're talking about.
Yes. Now, we're going to have to probably subtract out this discussion, you know what I mean?
That's fine, but I think we should work toward a policy.
All right. Yes, yes, I'm all for coming up with a formal policy. Okay, with that, we have Connor with the stopwatch and our deputy clerk ready to rock and roll and read the comments that were submitted electronically. Please proceed.
The first comment was from Mary Holbein, who just recently spoke, so I will not read that one. The next one is from Denise Niesman regarding new voting equipment. Her comment is, "I support the recommendation of the Election Division for new equipment that will allow 100% paper ballots." The next comment is from Carol Jeanie Davis regarding election equipment. Her comment is, "Today is National Voter Registration Day. What an embarrassment that DuPage County does not have functional legal election system. The system chosen by the Election Division has several advantages. It was rated most secure by the Illinois State Board of Elections with state-of-the-art equipment specifically designed for the sole purpose of running elections, not repurposed laptops. The equipment, which is manufactured in the United States, is easy to set up, use, and take down. But perhaps most important is the fact that the election system chosen will provide ballots that look like ballots, 100% paper, and all the ballots will be uniform in appearance. Other systems considered did not do that. In fact, one vendor has what can best be described as printed receipts that require expensive proprietary paper. In an age of skepticism, it is important that voters have confidence in the ballot they cast. An easily readable, clearly marked ballot with traditional darkened boxes is the logical choice to accomplish that. The style of ballot that the chosen system uses creates a durable forensic paper trail that can easily be deciphered by recount observers who have to stand several feet away. While there are other cheaper vendors, it is important to bear in mind 16 years ago, in 2002 and 2004, the county spent a combined total of $8.5 million to purchase TSX voting machines and optical scanners. The reality is that the Election Division is only asking for $1.5 million more than what was spent 16 years ago when the system was last replaced. As has been stated numerous times in these meetings, pricing was never intended to be the final deciding factor, especially when one system is markedly superior to the others. Did the DuPage County Election Division select the cheapest system? No, they did not. They are not required to choose the cheapest. They are required to choose the lowest responsible bid, which is exactly what they did. The county doesn't use the cheapest dog food. Why should election voters, election workers be saddled with the cheapest election system?" End of comment. The next comment is from Donna Preppachal. Subject is election equipment. Comment is, "DuPage County currently has outdated election equipment that is no longer supported by the vendor. By state law, it can no longer be used. There are only three manufacturers who met the state's requirements for election equipment: Heart, Intercivic, ESNS, and Dominion. The DuPage County Clerk's Office partnered with the DuPage County Procurement Office to spend three months evaluating the options available. The team included subject experts from all parts of the Election Division. All three companies submitted bids for 10-year contracts. The team voted unanimously in favor of Heart, Intercivic. The initial contract bids, which did not include the continuing maintenance and other costs over 10 years, showed Heart at $10 million and ESNS at $5 million. If the ongoing costs were added in, it would, it would narrow but not close the gap. However, there is a huge difference in quality, and DuPage County is not exactly poor. There are numerous media articles about the problems with ESNS. Here is one of them." And then a, the, there are email addresses listed. "And here is information, and here is information gathered from the County Clerk's Office by ordinary citizens about Heart and how it is compared to ESNS. Some of the features of Heart include: 100% paper ballots, 100% made and assembled in the United States. Ballots are printed on demand, and all ballots are uniform whether from early voting, same-day voting, or vote by mail. This is easier for voter education. The vote by mail, early voting, and same-day ballots are all sorted and counted separately at the election facility, not mixed together. Ballots are printed on demand. Currently, the county is required to print in advance ballots in the number of 110% of the registered voters in each precinct. Print on demand means that a ballot is printed only as it is needed. This saves on cost and is better for the environment. What are the likely future costs of both systems? Are, are, are they an à la carte, or are they a complete package? The Heart/Intercivic voting system proposal is a complete package. The ESNS proposal would require substantial additional future costs, including paper for ballots since the system requires exclusive use of ESNS paper, which could have price increases each year. Also, the ESNS system would not fit in the existing precinct supply boxes. New boxes would need to be ordered, which would cost an estimated $2 million more. But the, do the proposals include the cost of ballot printers? Yes. However, the quote from ESNS did not include quotes or list their top-of-the-line printers. The printers in the quote from ESNS would be substantially slower than the printers included in the price of the Heart system. Are the costs of the printers, paper, printing, and shipping included in the proposals?"
Excuse me, deputy, that conclude, three minutes is up, so you can submit the rest of that to our minutes, and they can be viewed in their entirety. Let's go to the next one, please.
Okay, the next one is from Antonia Harlan. The subject is purchase of Heart/Intercivic voting equipment. The comment is, "The fight against voter suppression continues. Our county has a long history of struggles for the right to vote, beginning with the founding fathers, to the right to vote for women and African-Americans, to the many forms of voter suppression we see today. Our right to vote and the integrity of our vote must be protected. The suppressive techniques we see across the county cast an unwarranted suspicion on our election process, which is a direct assault on our democracy. DuPage County should not join the ranks of this frankly dangerous movement to destabilize, by destabilizing the trust in our election process in any way. On September 24, 2019, I addressed the DuPage County Board highlighting the archaic malfunctioning voting machines and how they could lead to voter suppression. This was almost two budget years ago to the day, which was ample time for the county board to appropriate the much-needed funding to purchase new voting equipment and retire the old. How could you not see the urgency to act then? I did, and so did many others. As elected officials and public servants, you have a duty to protect the voting rights of our residents by upholding your responsibilities to your constituents. I understand that you are extending an invitation to participate in the process of selecting the voting equipment, but instead chose to be absent, and now you are dismissing what has been deemed the best choice via the critical examination by Jean Casmeric County Clerk and her Election Division staff, who has the expertise and skills needed to make such decisions. From what I have read and heard is that the scrutinizing of the Heart/Intercivic voting equipment was a thorough one and met our needs over the others. Our nation was formed as a democratic republic where the power lies with citizens who are entitled to vote by way of free elections. But yet, our voting rights are continually being challenged by suppressive measures from our local levels of government on up. DuPage County Government should consider its motto when making decisions for our residents, which states, 'DuPage County, a great place to live, work, and raise a family.' You should resist joining in anything close to submersive annex that could not, that could bring doubt to our local election system, the cherished voters, votes of our residents, and our, and the decisions made by the Election Division. Several years ago, voters were looking for a resolution to the county's voting issues that had plagued our elections, from faulty memory cards to the purchase of failing discarded voting machines from another county. The county had experienced problems for three election cycles. Jean Casmeric and her staff have done their due diligence to correct these unnecessary obstacles to voting in DuPage County. Time is of the essence in order to get our election process ready to roll out with enough time to train our civic warriors. DuPage County has a $483.3 million spending plan for 2021."
Excuse me, that concludes three minutes.
Okay. The next public comment is from Andrew Harlan regarding DuPage County voting machines. "DuPage County Board Members, my call is for certain public officials to be responsible. This letter is directed to the county board members to highlight the critical need to acquire new, high-quality voting machines for DuPage County. As I understand, the reasons stated for not approving the purchase are grossly insufficient. One, DuPage County does not have available funds for that acquisition. Two, question the need for high-quality equipment proposed by the DuPage County Election Division. And three, the budget did not include funds to purchase new voting machines. As a 33-year-old resident of Naperville, I am completely disappointed, dismayed, disgusted, and highly offended at the irresponsible representation that was displayed when the board voted not to replace the county's voting machines. Board Members, you were advised that replacements are needed because the current voting machines are no longer supported by the firm that supplied them, and many of the machines are in disrepair. In August 2019, during a presentation by the League of Women Voters, the local NAACP membership was advised of the critically unpredictable state of DuPage County's voting machines. This was so disturbing that certain members, including myself, presented our concerns at the very next county board meeting. We asked DuPage County Board to immediately review the status of the voting machine conditions and to set aside sufficient funds to acquire new voting machines prior to the next election. We felt the residents of DuPage County, as the leading progressive county in the state, deserved much better. DuPage County Board Members were voted into office to represent the will of the people. Obviously, on this issue, you are not providing the reliable and dedicated representation to your individual districts. Today, we are witnesses that the county board disregarded and ignored NAACP members' plea to set aside sufficient funding in the annual budget to acquire a new voting machine. However, there are funds available in two separate DuPage County non-restricted accounts, including excess sales collections, which is sufficient to easily accommodate the required voting machine purchases. The Election Division has made several presentations and proposals over the last year after significant in-depth study and research of the quality and cost offerings of the nation's leading voting machine companies. The Election Division has spent untold hours on this research, including implant review, so the proposals are entirely dependable. County Board Members, time is of essence. You must act, so I ask that you reacquaint yourselves with the entire time-consuming process of selecting elections personnel, the full range of training requirements, site selections, and pay arrangements required to make the county's readiness needs prior to the 2022 elections. The vote and the access to the vote is our individual right as American citizens, and this is inherently baked into the U.S. Constitution."
Excuse me, deputy, that concludes three minutes.
Okay, that concludes the letters.
Okay. All right, well, then that concludes our public comment period. Thank you all for participating. We move on to the next order of business entitled Consent.
So moved.
There's been a motion and a second. Deputy Clerk King, would you please call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry, Member Salmon, forgive me.
I'm sorry, I think we need to pull item K before we do that, because we pulled it in finance.
Oh, yes, we do, yeah. I'm sorry, what was that?
Oh, okay, so, yes, so with leave of the body, I'm advised that we would like to remove item K from our consideration today. Hearing no objections, seeing no objection, that item will be so removed. With that understanding, A through L, accepting K, consent. There's been a motion and a second. Ms. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you. Onto the order of county board, Member Ashley Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 443-21, a resolution appointment of Joseph Marwinowitz as a member municipal of the Police Records Management System Oversight Committee.
Been a motion and a second. Ms. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move on FIR 043821, resolution placing name on payroll.
Lapland? Ozog? Pachowski? Renahan? Rutledge? Shorzy? Selman? Tornatori?
Thank you, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move on FIR 043821, resolution placing name on payroll.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, I move on FIR 043921, resolution budget transfers 9/28/2021 from various companies and accounting units.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Move on FIR 044421, resolution additional appropriation for the ARPA Fund Housing Support Program, Community Services, $41,356.
Leave is granted.
Move on FIR 044521, resolution additional appropriation for the ARPA Fund Eviction Mediation Program for the 18th Judicial Circuit Court in the amount of $67,523.
Leave is granted.
You and I move on FIP 037521, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order between the County of DuPage and Rock, Fusco, and Conley, L.L.C. to provide consolation services, consulting services related to collective bargaining for labor negotiations for the period of December 1, 2021 through November 30, 2022 in the amount of $150,000. This is the second of three optional one-year renewals.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Chaplin. On to the Order of Animal Services, Member Kuduski. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on ASCO 0504-21, which is a recommendation for the approval of a change order number two, amending our purchase order 4992-0001 for a contract issued to Spay Illinois Pet Well Clinics to provide our pet population's fund, spay, and neuter services.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Member Covert. Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Lapland? Ozog? Pachowski? Renahan? Rutledge? Shorzy? Selman? Tornatori? Zay? Chaplin? Chavez? Covert? Desart? Duceyani? Eckhoff? Garcia? Hart? Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Kuduski. On to the Order of Development, Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and move approval of DCO 85-21, ordinance Z2162. This is a zoning hearing officer's recommendation, as well as a development committee recommendation, to approve a conditional use to allow an existing shed to remain less than three feet from the interior side property line.
And a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori? Aye. Zay? Chaplin? Aye. Chavez? Covert? Desart? Duceyani? Eckhoff? Garcia? Hart? Kuduski? Lapland? Ozog? Pachowski? Renahan? Rutledge? Shorzy? Selman? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and move approval of DCO 86-21, ordinance Z2164, a zoning hearing officer and development committee recommendation to approve a variation to increase the height of a 50% open fence and a corner yard setback, and a conditional use to allow an existing shed to remain less than 30 feet from the corner side property line.
Second most favorable rule? Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and move approval of DCO 87-21, ordinance Z2165. This is also a zoning hearing officer and development committee approval to allow a conditional use to allow an existing shed to remain less than three feet from the interior side property line.
Second most favorable rule? Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. On to the Order of Economic Development, Member Amy Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to give everyone a committee update, which is that I'd like to thank Lisa Shabak from WorkNet for coming to our last meeting to talk about our Federal American Jobs Center. Because of the challenges facing our businesses here in DuPage during the pandemic, finding employees is tough, and I want to encourage our DuPage businesses to utilize this resource by going to worknetdupage.org or finding them on Facebook at WorkNet DuPage Career Center. Both job seekers and employers can benefit from these services. So with that, I will move on to make a motion for EDR 043421, a resolution for acceptance and appropriation of the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, PY21 Intergovernmental Agreement 21681006, in the amount of $5,636,958.
There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chavez? Aye. Covert? Desart? Duceyani? Eckhoff? Garcia? Hart? Kuduski? Lapland? Ozog? Pachowski? Renahan? Rutledge? Shorzy? Selman? Tornatori? Zay? Chaplin? Motion passes.
Thank you. Member Chavez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of EDR 043521, a resolution for approval and issuance of payments to DuPage County to training providers and youth contracts through Workforce Innovation and Economic Opportunity Grant, PY21 Intergovernmental Agreement 21681006, in the amount of $2,816,229.
There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chavez? Aye. Covert? Desart? Duceyani? Eckhoff? Garcia? Hart? Kuduski? Lapland? Ozog? Pachowski? Renahan? Oh, sorry. Rutledge? Shorzy? Selman? Tornatori? Zay? Chaplin? Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Member Chavez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of EDCO 050221, amendment to the contract issued to the Parents Alliance Employment Project for Youth Services for Training. This is to extend and increase the contract in the amount of $91,594.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move EDCO 050321, amendment to the contract issued to the Parents Alliance Employment Services in the, this is to extend and increase by $225,741.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Chavez.
Thank you.
On to the Order of Environmental, Member Rutledge.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the opportunity to address this body regardless of whether I have something to vote on. I believe the Code Red report that came out in the last month or so compels me to want to talk about the things that we can do to improve our environment, so that's the reason that I wanted to speak this morning. Something that I'm focused on this week, and at this time of the year for gardeners, it's time to reevaluate our yard, move things around, and get the jump on that spring growing season. And so I am talking with the Conservation Foundation, Conservation at Home. They come out to properties free of charge to give you ideas on, you know, you can tell them what's working in your yard, what's not working, they ID invasive species that we should all be concerned about on our properties. And they ask if you want to be more proactive, so they'll leave literature and give you access to a private Facebook group that will answer any questions you have. But if you, if you look at your property as a whole and identify areas where you might have rain issues or flooding, rain gardens of native plants can take care of a lot of that issue, and if we all did a little more of that, stormwater would have less to do. So that is my, my talk for the day, and as you all know, that, you know, kind of what got me thinking about this was grass. You all know I don't really care for the amount of money that we spend on turf, the chemicals that we use to get it to grow, and the machines that we use that pollute our air to take care of it, so look over your yard this fall and think about converting a little bit of your turf into a native species to help all of our butterflies and stormwater and all that stuff that would be beneficial. Thank you so much.
Very nice. Thank you, Member Rutledge. On to the Order of Health and Human Services, Member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned in the opening comments, there's been a very strong collaboration between Community Services and Court to help residents avoid eviction where possible and to assist with court processes and mediation. So just as a reminder to the Board, October 3, the eviction moratorium ends, and 10/4 will be the first day of court proceedings that can go forward. So I'd like to specifically thank and, you know, offer appreciation to Chief Judge Popejoy, Mary Keating, Community Services, Joan Fox, Suzanne Armstrong, and Kimberly Bress for their hard work on these projects. They're working hard to dovetail services to support both landlords and tenants through this difficult process, so. With that, I will move on authorization for overnight travel. Community Services Manager to meeting in Springfield, October 20 through the 21st, 2021, $340.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan? Aye. Rutledge? Aye. Shorzy? Selman? Tornatori? Zay? Chaplin? Chavez? Covert? Desart? Duceyani? Eckhoff? Garcia? Hart? Kuduski? Lapland? Ozog? Pachowski? Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Member Renahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of another overnight travel for Community Services Manager to go to Oglesby, Illinois, First Serve Illinois Commission, October 4 through the 5th of 2021. No charge.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Renahan. On to the Order of Judicial Public Safety, Member Renahan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPSP 36121, contract purchase order to Sentinel Offender Services for probation to provide GPS service and electronic monitoring for juveniles and adult offenders and their victims, October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2022, not to exceed $103,000.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan? Aye. Rutledge? Shorzy? Selman? Tornatori? Zay? Chaplin? Chavez? Covert? Desart? Duceyani? Eckhoff? Garcia? Hart? Kuduski? Lapland? Ozog? Pachowski?
I don't know that she registered my vote. No, I mean, I.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Member Renahan. We move on to the next order of business entitled Legislative for a Committee Update, Member Dawn Desart.
Thank you. The DuPage County Legislative Committee has had a robust year so far. In 2019, the committee met 10 times. In 2020, with COVID, the committee met just a handful of times, and already in 2021, the legislative committee has met 12 times already. We've had our lobbyists, Bill Vani, Chip Humes, and Mark Polis in to speak several times about federal and state legislation, including ARPA Fund guidance, and we've had several legislative wins this year, including the statewide ban on the use of puppy mills being used to populate pet stores. We've had our legislators come in to speak to our committee, including Congresswoman Lauren Underwood, Congressman Raja Krishnamoorthy, Senator John Curran, State Rep. Deb Conroy, Senators Laura Elman and Farina Via, along with Joe McCoy, came in and spoke with us recently about ISECO and everything they do for the county. Mary Keating, who spoke about CSBG funding, and then Linda Zerwyn came in to talk about the number-one surcharge. And we'll continue to invite guests and speakers when relevant to issues championed by DuPage County, and we continually keep in touch with our federal and state legislators through the excellent work of Cheryl Marquet. She just does a tremendous job, such a great job. In Springfield, a little update for you right now, the Fall Veto Session is currently scheduled for October 19 to the 21st, and then from October 26 through the 28th, as the General Assembly has already addressed the few vetoes issued by the Governor, the primary purpose of the six-day veto session will be to adopt a new congressional redistricting map. Therefore, it is expected that House and Senate leadership will cancel several days of the Fall Veto Session. Both Speaker Welch and President Harmon have also indicated that next year's Spring Legislative Session will be an abbreviated one. Things are fluid in Washington. I'm sure you all heard that Senate Republicans on Monday evening last night blocked a measure to fund the government and suspend the debt ceiling, carrying through on their threat that delivered the votes for a Democratic measure to raise the government's borrowing limits, and I'm sure Cheryl Marquet will keep us posted on what happens next. And late last week, Blake Kilmer, who is the Constituent Services Liaison for Congressman Raja Krishnamoorthy, told us that regarding the infrastructure bill at this moment, there are three infrastructure bills in the works in Congress. There's a bipartisan infrastructure bill and a human infrastructure reconciliation package. I had asked the Congressman if there would be any funding in the infrastructure bill for boutique projects like our animal services building addition project, and Blake said the matter you are speaking to in your request about the animal shelter would be addressed in the third bill, so that's some good news. Chairman Kuduski? Also, remember Deacon Garcia had brought up the idea of installing electric charging stations in our campus parking garages, and it makes perfect sense, Member Garcia, because just yesterday Ford Motor Company announced that within nine years, they plan to have 40% of their fleet electric, so that makes perfect sense. So I asked the Congressman if there might be funding for that project under one of the infrastructure bills, and he said regarding that bipartisan infrastructure bill officially known as the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, so that's the third infrastructure bill, it includes $7.5 billion to create charging stations across the U.S. and another $7.5 billion to transition buses and other modes of public transportation away from fossil fuels. House committees were holding markups for the reconciliation bill late last week, so we'll keep you posted on that. So that's my update, my conclusion of the Chairman's remarks regarding the legislative committee. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We move on to the next order of business entitled Public Works, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of Item A, FMP 036721, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Wold Architects and Engineers to provide on-call professional architectural and engineering services as needed for facilities management for the period September 28, 2021 through November 30, 2024, for a total contract amount not to exceed $250,000, professional services according, along with Illinois Local Government Professional Services Selection Act.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog? Aye. Pachowski? Renahan? Rutledge? Shorzy? Selman? Tornatori? Zay? Chaplin? Chavez? Covert? Desart? Duceyani? Eckhoff? Garcia? Hart? Kuduski? Lapland? Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Member Ozog?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of FMP 036821, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Arlington Glass and Mirror Company for on-call window glazing repair, replacement, window adjustment, and board-up services as needed for county facilities for facilities management for the two-year period, October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2023, for a contract total amount not to exceed $70,000, renewal option, first and final option to renew.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. Next, I move for approval of FMP 037021, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Nikor Gas for natural gas utility and distribution services for county facilities for facilities management for the four-year period, October 1, 2021 through to Wold Architects and Engineers to provide on-call professional architectural and engineering services as needed for facilities management for the period September 28th, 2021 through November 30th, 2024, for a total contract amount not to exceed $250,000, professional services, according to, along with Illinois Local Government Professional Services Selection Act.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ciani. Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Member Ozog?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of PWP 036921, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Polidine Incorporated to supply polymer for the Woodridge and Knollwood wastewater treatment facilities for Public Works for the period November 1st, 2021 through October 30th, 2022, for a contract total amount not to exceed $270,000 per renewal option, second of three possible renewals.
Leave is granted.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of PWC O 050621 and PWC O 0031A20, recommendation for the approval of amendment to Resolution PWC O 003120 and PWP 025919 issued to Polidine Incorporated due to changing biological phosphorus removal, which increases sludge production for Public Works to increase the contract amount, the contract in the amount of $70,000, taking the original contract amount of $174,452.85 and resulting in an amendment contract total amount not to exceed $244,452.85, an increase of 40.13%.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So that concludes the committee report. We move on to the order of business entitled Transportation. Member Pachowski is absent. Vice Chair, Member Ozog, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of DTP 037221. Oh, I'm sorry. It's on. Oh, sorry. Okay. I move for approval of DTP 037221, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Nycor Gas to provide natural gas distribution services as needed for the Division of Transportation for a four-year period, October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2025, for a contract total amount not to exceed $60,000, public utility.
Been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog.
Yes.
Pachowski.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ciani. Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of DTP 037321, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to ComEd to provide electric services as needed for the Division of Transportation for the four-year period, October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2025, for a contract total not to exceed $575,000, public utility.
Been a motion and a second. Is there a request for leave? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
We took a roll call on Item A, so we can move to leave.
Leave is granted. Member Ozog?
Sheila, are you getting tired of the sound of my voice? A lot to read today. Okay, I move for approval of Item DTP 037421, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to K-Tech Specialty Coatings Incorporated to furnish and deliver de-icing liquids as needed for the Division of Transportation for the period December 1st, 2021 through November 30th, 2023, for a contract total amount not to exceed $170,000, exempt from bidding, sole source.
Leave is granted, Member Ozog.
Okay. The next item, I would like to make a motion to waive the first reading of DTO 008821, an amendment to the DuPage County Fair Share Road Improvement Impact Fee Ordinance, ODT 021R89.
Oh, there's a motion to waive first reading, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve DTO 008821, an amendment to the DuPage County Fair Share Road Improvement Impact Fee Ordinance, ODT 021R89, which will include new expenditure and fee mitigation policies and update to impact fee rate schedule.
Second most favorable roll? Leave is granted, Member Ozog.
Okay, thank you. I now move to, for approval of authorization for overnight travel, manager of highway operations, Bloomington, Illinois, $293.
Motion and a second. Request for leave? Leave is granted.
Okay, but D'Ciani.
Oh, Mr. D'Ciani, okay.
Mr. D'Ciani and Mr. Zay came back.
Been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog.
Yes.
Pachowski.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ciani. Eckhoff.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of authorization for overnight travel, highway maintenance supervisor travel to Bloomington, Illinois, October 19th, expenses $293.62.
Leave is granted, Member Ozog.
Thank you. I move for approval of authorization for overnight travel, highway maintenance supervisor Bloomington, Illinois, expenses $293.62.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very nice, Member Ozog, a fine report. Onto the order of business entitled Discussion. We've seen this before. We're obligated under Public Act 990646 to address pension obligation projections. Anyone seeking recognition on this matter, seeing none, hearing none? We move on to the next order of business entitled Old Business. Old Business, Member Garcia.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, Chairman, for the great budget presentation you did today. I did notice in there that you've got a budget vehicle replacement fund in the budget, and I'm very excited to see that. And so I'm going to go back to actually what Member Desart just said, and I'm hoping that the replacements for some of these vehicles are going to be electric, so that we'll be going more sustainable in the future.
I think there is an objective, a policy objective. We want to get to be as friendly as we can environmentally with our vehicles. And so we do have an objective that we're trying to meet with electric vehicles. So certainly is the goal. Yeah, Member Chaplin?
Thank you, Chairman. Excuse me, I have a frog in my throat today. So just an update from finance, with regards to the election equipment, because I know everybody's concerned about that. Staff is going to be meeting with the election division, and they are putting together an RFP. That RFP should be going out by the end of the week with a quick turnaround so that we can have it in finance and the county board by the end of the month. I think everybody understands how important it is and critical that we, you know, purchase election equipment. So I just want everybody to know that we're very committed to seeing this process through in a quick timeframe.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Member Covert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for that wonderful presentation, the budget presentation that we had this morning. I just had a really quick question, and I could work with Nick Kotmeyer on this, but is there a way to separate out certain items from the budget? Because we do vote on it collectively, all together, every year, but there, and I have abstained from it before, there is, if I have any issue with this specific item, is it possible to separate that out?
Sure. I mean, yeah, of course. It's in your hands now, and you can identify or focus on one particular piece of it, and if you are uncomfortable or want to change it or revise it, that's your prerogative. But yes, it's not, it's not like Springfield, you know, where it's one vote up or down on one package. So yes, you have that prerogative as a duly elected board member, and I would welcome it.
Thank you.
Member D'Ciani?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the level of new vehicles, I would like to encourage us to look at performance contracting. It's a very economical way to get into environmentally friendly vehicles. We've got companies that are supplying police departments and public works departments with alternative vehicles, from propane to gas to electric. And I think that would be a very important thing, and they'll even work out leasing so we don't have to actually come up with a lot of capital. Secondly, I noticed in your budget, I think a good appropriation for the sheriff's office, which I commend you on. I think right now especially, we're seeing a huge influx of crime. We're hearing Bob Berlin talk about 17% increases in violent crime. You know, we just had a carjacking in Elmhurst last week, 9:00 in the morning, at 7:11, at gunpoint, three people, literally took a guy out of his car and stole the vehicle. High-speed chase. We gave up the chase because we didn't hurt anybody in Elmhurst. We got a great police department. We also had apprehension of juveniles, I believe there were three, and that apprehension. They were armed with a 9mm with three clips, fully loaded and chambered, walking through a residential neighborhood. Fortunately, a local individual questioned what they were doing, called the police, and we apprehended these folks. They were stealing out of cars, they were checking front doors in their homes, and fortunately got probable cause. But they are juveniles, so likely not see the implication, implications that an adult would see. But these folks are brazen, and they're coming into Elmhurst, they're coming into Oakbrook, they're coming into DuPage County, and we need to be proactive versus reactive. I'm hoping that the headcount increase of 38 that I see in your budget is going to be going toward law enforcement, because we've seen a reduction from 545 down to 491 since you've been chairman, as chairman. And I'm hoping that we could restore those cuts, which again, I voted against every time, because we need people, we need boots on the ground, we need people on the offense, and so we don't have to play defense. Crime is at a, I think, an uncharted time, given what's happening. It's been on the rise for over a decade, and now with COVID, it seems, and the new laws have been passed in the legislature that are anti-police, it seems to be out of control. So I'm hoping that those headcount additions will be going to the sheriff, so he can do what he needs to do to keep this county safe.
Thank you. Member Desart?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I completely agree with Member D'Ciani. I think if you watch the news at all, just last night on the news, it said that murder is up 200%, 200% in the last year, and crimes are up at least 70%, 17% across the country. I know of one high school in Will County that reported 70, 70 suspensions already this school year due to fighting and things like that, attacks on other people. So people are mad right now. They're angry, and they're acting out. So I agree with Member D'Ciani that funding law enforcement to the max is a priority for DuPage County. Thank you.
Member Covert?
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention another thing, and Member D'Ciani actually reminded me of it. I've spoken about this before, but because of the increased crime rate in DuPage County, a lot of the ASAs at the state's attorney's office have a larger workload at the state's attorney's office. And these are, you know, newly, some of them are newly graduates from law school with student loans, and they don't have, you know, they don't make a whole lot to, you know, pay their rent and also to pay their loans. And I advocate for increasing their wages, their salary, because of this burden that they have. I'm happy that the state's attorney is going to be hiring more attorneys to kind of alleviate that burden, but, you know, I'm just not sure with the labor shortage right now if that would be possible. So I would like to work with our staff to see if we could get an increase in the salaries for these ASAs. I think a lot of people think that, you know, money grows on trees for lawyers, and that's not true. And we need to really support the ASAs and increase their salaries so they have a livable wage along with their student loans. Thank you.
Very good. Further discussion? We move on to the next order of business entitled New Business. New Business, Member Desart?
Thank you, Chairman. I have brand-new new business. I would like to extend a personal congratulations to Member Greg Hart and Alex and their family. I'm baby George, I think it's wonderful, welcome George into the world.
Member Chaplin?
Thank you so much. So just a reminder, I know that some members of the public spoke on this, but today is National Voter Registration Day, and DuPage County has been a proud partner of this annual effort. So the citizens are encouraged to go down to our clerk's office or to go to their website and, you know, register to vote if you're not registered. It's a good, it's, you know, it's a great thing to do. And then secondly, just to comment on the electric vehicles, you know, earlier this year, the sheriff, myself, Nick, Jeff, a whole group of people, we did look into possibly leasing and electric vehicles and things of that nature. And, you know, at this time, it just wasn't, we didn't see a benefit, that's correct. But I think that we should always be, you know, open to looking at, you know, new things for our, for our purchase of vehicles. And, you know, I really, that meeting with the sheriff and Jeff and staff, really, we, and Chris Schneider was there, actually, and that's where the idea of the vehicle replacement fund came in. So it was a really productive meeting and a great meeting, and I appreciate Member D'Ciani's comments about looking into vehicles, and I said we did, but I think it's something that we should always keep our mind open. So thank you.
Further discussion on the order of new business? New Business, Member Eckhoff?
I just wanted to follow up on the report that we got from the Health Department over the weekend regarding COVID. It seems that the death rate, the number of cases, and the positivity rate are all going in the right direction and seem to be, the Health Department can correct me if I'm wrong, about at the same levels we're at in May and June when masks in this county started to come off. So despite the fact that the CDC's got a rating system that's not really descriptive or informative, and continues to rate us at the same level as Southern Illinois and some states that have very low vaccination rates, I would hope that we as leaders would urge the Health Department and our other elected officials and the governor to recognize that DuPage County, because of our great Health Department and our great residents, have got a different situation than Southern Illinois and some of the other states, along with our metro area residents, in that when we do get down to those low levels again, and we may already be there, that there be some consideration to treat our area differently than those other areas, because I think we deserve it, and that's another way to show people who may be resistant to getting vaccinated, that if they do get vaccinated, that there are benefits that can be turned over to them because of the vaccination.
Further discussion, Member Ozog?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry to report that a good friend of mine texted me this morning, and she has had a breakthrough infection, is vaccinated, and is now quarantining, and hopefully it will not go any further. She also has some significant health issues and was scheduled for surgery in the next few days. So I ask everyone to continue to follow the governor's orders, continue to wear your masks.
especially, we're seeing a huge influx of crime. We're hearing Bob Berlin talk about 17% increases in violent crime. You know, we just had a carjacking in Elmhurst last week, 9:00 in the morning, it's 7:11, at gunpoint, three people, literally took a guy out of his car and stole the vehicle, high-speed chase. We gave up the chase because we didn't hurt anybody in Elmhurst. We got a great police department. We also had apprehension of juveniles, I believe there were three, and that apprehension. They were armed with a 9mm with three clips, fully loaded and chambered, walking through a residential neighborhood. Fortunately, a local individual questioned what they were doing, called the police. We apprehended these folks. They were stealing out of cars, they were checking front doors in their homes, and fortunately got probable cause. But they are juveniles, so likely not see the implication, implications that an adult would see. But these folks are brazen, and they're coming into Elmhurst, they're coming into Oak Brook, they're coming into DuPage County. And we need to be proactive versus reactive. I'm hoping that the headcount increase of 38 that I see in your budget is going to be going toward law enforcement, because we've seen a reduction from 545 down to 491 since you've been chairman, as chairman. And I'm hoping that we could restore those cuts, which, again, I voted against every time, because we need people, we need boots on the ground, we need people on the offense, and so we don't have to play defense. Crime is at a, I think, an uncharted time, given what's happening. It's been on the rise for over a decade, and now with COVID, it seems, and the new laws have been passed in the legislature, that are anti-police, it seems to be out of control. So I'm hoping that those headcount additions will be going to the sheriff, so he can do what he needs to do to keep this county safe. Thank you.
Member Desart.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I completely agree with Member D'Ciani. I think if you watch the news at all, even just last night on the news, it said that murder is up 200%, 200% in the last year, and crimes are up at least 70%, 17% across the country. I know of one high school in Will County that reported 70, 70 suspensions already this school year due to fighting and things like that, attacks on other people. So people are mad right now. They're angry, and they're acting out. So I agree with Member D'Ciani that funding law enforcement to the max is a priority for DuPage County. Thank you.
Member Covert.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention another thing, and Member D'Ciani actually reminded me of it. I've spoken about this before, but because of the increased crime rate in DuPage County, a lot of the ASAs at the State's Attorney's Office have a larger workload at the State's Attorney's Office. And these are, you know, newly, some of them are newly graduates from law school with student loans, and they don't have, you know, they don't make a whole lot to, you know, pay their rent and also to pay their loans. And I advocate for increasing their wages, their salary, because of this burden that they have. I'm happy that the State's Attorney is going to be hiring more attorneys to kind of alleviate that burden. But, you know, I'm just not sure with the labor shortage right now if that would be possible. So I would like to work with our staff to see if we could get an increase in the salaries for these ASAs. I think a lot of people think that, you know, money grows on trees for lawyers, and that's not true. And we need to really support the ASAs and increase their salaries so they have a livable wage along with their student loans. Thank you.
Very good. Further discussion? We move on to the next order of business entitled New Business. New Business, Member Desart.
Thank you, Chairman. I have brand-new New Business. I would like to extend a personal congratulations to Member Greg Hart and Alex and their family and baby George. I think that's wonderful, and welcome, George, into the world.
Member Chaplin.
Thank you so much. So just a reminder, I know that some members of the public spoke on this, but today is National Voter Registration Day, and DuPage County has been a proud partner of this annual effort. So the citizens are encouraged to go down to our clerk's office or to go to their website and, you know, register to vote if you're not registered. It's a good, it's, you know, it's a great thing to do. And then secondly, just to comment on the electric vehicles, you know, earlier this year, the sheriff, myself, Nick, Jeff, a whole group of people, we did look into possibly leasing and electric vehicles and things of that nature. And, you know, at this time, it just wasn't, we didn't see a benefit as correct. But I think that we should always be, you know, open to looking at, you know, new things for our, for our purchase of vehicles. And, you know, I really, that meeting with the sheriff and Jeff and staff, really, we, and Chris Schneider was there, actually. And that's where the idea of the Vehicle Replacement Fund came in. So it was a really productive meeting and a great meeting. And I appreciate Member D'Ciani's comments about looking into vehicles. Like I said, we did, but I think it's something that we should always keep our mind open. So thank you.
Further discussion on the order of New Business. New Business, Member Eckhoff.
Well, I just wanted to follow up on the report that we got from the Health Department over the weekend regarding COVID. It seems that the death rate, the number of cases, and the positivity rate are all going in the right direction and seem to be, the Health Department can correct me if I'm wrong, about at the same levels we're at in May and June when masks in this county started to come off. So despite the fact that the CDC's got a rating system that's not really descriptive or informative, and continues to rate us at the same level as Southern Illinois and some states that have very low vaccination rates, I would hope that we as leaders would urge the Health Department and our other elected officials and the governor to recognize that DuPage County, because of our great Health Department and our great residents, have got a different situation than Southern Illinois and some of the other states, along with our metro area residents, in that when we do get down to those low levels again, and we may already be there, that there be some consideration to treat our area differently than those other areas, because I think we deserve it. And that's another way to show people who may be resistant to getting vaccinated, that if they do get vaccinated, there are benefits that can be turned over to them because of the vaccination.
Further discussion, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry to report that a good friend of mine texted me this morning, and she has had a breakthrough infection, is vaccinated, and is now quarantining, and hopefully it will not go any further. She also has some significant health issues and was scheduled for surgery in the next few days. So I ask everyone to continue to follow the governor's orders, continue to wear your masks. And unfortunately, this is where we're at right now. So God willing, we'll be out of this in three months, six months, eight months. But right now, masks, vaccinations, that is the direction that our Health Department has let us in, and our state is leading us in. So I ask everyone to continue to follow those. This is not over, unfortunately. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion, Member Rennahan.
Thank you. I just had a question on our redistricting committee meetings. I don't see it on our agenda. I don't know if there's a reason why it's not in on the website as far as meeting dates. I think we have one tomorrow. I'm just interested in, you know, those maybe, can I request that those be put on our regular agenda?
Sure.
Because I think we have to do Omaha, right?
Right, yeah. Yeah, I've been sort of curious about what's going on over there. So, yeah, so, yeah, I remember Zay, I think that's your responsibility. So I trust your leadership here.
Yeah, I don't think it's on there because it's not an open meeting. We're not meeting the whole committee. We're meeting, and as we've done in the past, where the districts that are being looked at, that border each other, and there's lines being redrawn, that they'll be able to discuss that without the whole committee. So we won't be having a committee meeting. We're just having more of a work session where we can all look at this. And then, once those lines are drawn, then they will be brought to the meeting and to the public and the rest of the board.
Got it. Okay. Further discussion on the order of New Business. New Business. Seeing none, hearing none. I can tell you that we do have a matter before us on the order of executive session, dealing with collective bargaining, collective negotiating matters. So pursuant to Open Meetings Act 5, ILCS 120/2C2, I would ask that we organize ourselves in executive session. I will entertain a motion seconded. There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
I would ask everybody to remain seated. We can just ask folks from the public and others who are not appropriate to be in the room to please excuse themselves. And then we can get started in executive session as soon as possible. Member Salmon? From Joe, can we proceed? Okay, we can go right into our regular session, open session, where we have an item on the agenda that has been referred from executive session. Item, who wants to present this, Mr. State Chairman? So, how about Member Desart? Why don't you present this one?
I'd like to make a motion to approve FIR 0437-21, a resolution authorizing the contract with Metropolitan Alliance of Police, Chapter 174, for employees of the DuPage County Coroner's Office, expiring November 30th, 2023.
Okay.
For math employees, Chapter 174.
There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, the item is approved. That concludes our reports and our business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting to Tuesday, October 12th at 10:00 AM? All those in favor say aye. 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 The ayes have it. Meeting adjourned.